She's got the money.
Oh, is she there?
Apparently it really won't pass.
Bring a quorum of all the meetings to order? Excuse me, gentlemen.
You want to start with prayer or is that what?
That was a five minutes.
Sorry.
It's my intention, and I hope that today is relatively in fall, but I think I'm required to say by law that Mr. Gant is recording the meeting and no one else. Does anyone else wish to record? So, this is, this is my, I had some thoughts for a while about, for lack of a better word, with the smaller management of the board, operations of the board, how we go about what it is. So, that's the intention of this listing. I've been developing my own thoughts for, well, I guess two years since I've been with you guys. So, this is some of the things that I think of. I think that lead time is a key, and I've always had trouble without more lead time. So, kind of like getting the agenda, where at least for me and my structure, my life is very close to the meeting. And so, that's what, so sort of the flow, if that would be a good way to put it.
Yeah.
That would be a straight part of your proposition.
Yeah.
You know, the flow of when the agenda is put together even in draft form. And when it comes to us so that we have more time to really, you know, get into the matters that will be delivered. And we've had some initial discussions about that, so that's one of the things I want to talk about. The other has to do with the formulation of the agenda itself and having it, for lack of a better word, managed more, more thought go into how many items are on a given night A and B, the order of the items and whatnot. So, we didn't have a lot of ability to impact the last Monday night's agenda because the meeting before was our work meeting. We tried not to do a lot of business there. And so, this is only the first, and I'm just stepping into this role. But, and it came up to me at the end and said, "Good meeting," and hopefully it wasn't good meeting in the sense of what we did, but good, for me, an example of how I don't think an agenda is good either. I just think that there's too much. But it also has to do with the nature of the different types of items. So, we tried to group towards the things that are, with no disrespect to the people that need approval for a 5K or something, but that are relatively non-controversial and relatively perfunctory. Again, no disrespect to the people that need it. As opposed to, most of my concern is the amount of significant items that really require dialogue and deliberation and exploration and that kind of thing. And I just think it is more productive if we limit those. I think there's a tendency, and it's just people trying to be responsive. If someone asks to get something on the agenda, it pretty much gets on the agenda, and the agenda gets longer and longer and longer. And people may disagree, but I would rather manage that, and maybe that means that someone's going to have to wait two weeks for half of the year to meet every week anyway. So, you know, it certainly is not my intention to slow down the approval process. I also think within the town government, there's an education process that'll happen in terms of department heads and whatnot. If they just know they've got to get something in a few days earlier or that type of thing, I think it can work. And I think it would impact the quality of the meeting. I mean, the other part of it for me is the length of the meetings and particularly the structure of having a long, regular meeting followed by dual and regular sessions. And, you know, maybe it's just my old age, but I'm not at my best reviewing a collective I proposed collective bargaining agreement at 10:30 at night. You know, it's just, it's not my best work, you know, as I say. So, those are the kind of things. So, that's the spirit behind this list of items. Towards the end is more, and so it's not, it wasn't my intention in putting this together to have anything to do substance today. That's, this is maybe one of the first, and this is my whole point. Let's have some meetings that are more focused and more limited in terms of the nature. That's where I'm coming from.
Well, I think that's a great idea. I think people would appreciate, one, the meeting not being so long so that they don't have to wait three-plus hours to get on to speak. And if they have enough time to talk about whatever their issues are, because if we're trying to make sure that we get to everything before it's 11 o'clock, some conversations may be truncated just to try to jam it all in. So, I think giving each person more time to flush out some of the issues would make them more comfortable that we get all the information that we need in order to make a decision.
The other thing, actually, I agree with that. As a veteran of more four-hour Masco school committee meetings than I care to count, and I can tell you, we get pretty silly at the end. I would rather have two, two-hour meetings than one, three-and-a-half hour meeting. And for me personally, and I know this is not must be for anybody else necessarily, if that meant having to insert an extra Monday night in there so that it is a public meeting, it's on the night when people expect public meetings, that is, I wouldn't even consider it a sacrifice. So, that's an opportunity that I would support rather than have us pushing past 10:30 or...
But another thing that I think DuckTales only certainly can think about extra night meetings but is work sessions.
That's great.
Things have evolved to the point where there is very little difference between a work session. There's a camera there. So, it's not, the distinction practically used to be ones on camera, ones on. Camera's there. We're moving into a new town hall where, you know, camera's going to be everywhere, reserving the board's right to decide what's televised and what's not. I'm going to make a wild guess that it's more televised than not.
I think we head to more and it's fine.
But, you know, we have to do the things that everybody's comfortable with. But I think that isolating one or two topics, again, today is of particular nature, but isolating one or two substantive topics, this is a public meeting, this is a posted meeting, it's on camera, there's no intention to keep that away. But everything, to me, flows towards the Monday night meetings, to the regularly scheduled televised meetings. But for me, there's no reason why we can't do preliminary substantive discussions on a work session. Also, for the, I think for the first time, we are or becoming a board that has the ability to all meet at some point during the week. I can't do it like 12 o'clock, but I can do like 3 o'clock and that type of thing. No magic to that exact time. When we get to that point, we'll talk about having this sort of a default date and time and whatnot. And I'm not saying we have four of these a month, but even if we pop one in a month or something, I just think it will systemically take the pressure, not substantive pressure in terms of the amount of the items that allow us to function at a high level, as we personally would.
And come the Monday meeting, if we've had a chance to ask a lot of questions of everybody who's bringing something forth, and we've had a lot of discussion, we could just do a summary on, at the Monday night meeting to kind of bring people up to speed on a couple of key issues. I know you do that a number of times there because I was watching the meetings before the election.
We asked for Mr. Denny.
And I found it very helpful that it gave a quick synopsis to bring everybody up to, you know, the same slide. We could recap what we've done here in these sessions and then go forward. So, they would make the Monday night meeting go a lot faster, too.
Yeah, I would agree with that. My own sense is that, given kind of the evolution, that when we are in our new quarters and we'll be having these meetings in the town hall in a place with automatic recording or with recording equipment, that even if they're not televised, then being able to record it as a matter of course and find the appropriate way to have it posted so that it is available. But I think the evening meetings for substantive votes and so on. I personally would favor creating a calendar that kind of inserts a whole bunch, maybe every other week, of working sessions. And if we don't need one, cancel it. But I really like being able to sort of carve it out, this is a priority, and work around that schedule rather than say, "Can we meet next week on Tuesday?" "Oh, no, I can't because I'm scheduled."
I also, oh, I'm sorry. The difference between a working session and, as we call a working session, and a Monday night session is they're both recorded perhaps, but one informally, but they're live when they're on a Monday night. And I am sometimes astounded if somebody comes up and says, "Well, you know, not me." There are people who actually do watch it live, and I think there's something to that, when people watch it live. So, I think there's value in, depending upon the subject particularly, but because some of the more people are interested in, I suspect the village shopping center was one that maybe a lot of people were interested in last Monday night. Maybe all of them were, but that's one that based on the number of people who put in their comments on that two years ago, probably were interested in watching. So, that is a real distinct difference between these sessions and the ones on Monday night. And again, having them on Monday night is a time when people tend to be home versus even if we did them live at 3 o'clock, there's not as many people available. So, I think we should keep that in mind. One of the things that we had kind of set as a guideline for working sessions was that we didn't really take any votes there. They were typically to deal with things, most often the budgets, where we're dealing with people and we're trying to understand what their things are. They're going to be long and tedious between people. Those are the places that seem to be best for working sessions.
Well, I mean, I'm not sure I totally agree with you, but I want to be clear. There's no intention in us developing this to in any way diminish from the Monday night live broadcast. I don't think we should restrict, these are, again, lawful, posted, public meetings with an agenda. And if it behooves us to take a vote on something, then we should, you know, I'm not in favor of saying we will never take a vote. But that's not the primary thing. And it's also, you know, I respect the importance of our dissemination of our information to the public, but occasionally I'm of the old school that we might still want to find a way to get stuff done. And I think, I'm not trying to be sarcastic, I'm not trying to disrespect.
You've got to get stuff done.
But you get, so, I just would like to leave more flexibility in what we might use these for. So, to me, like, I'm not saying we should do this for the shopping center, but for example, that title issue, I personally, you guys can overlook it, don't think there's anything negative in any way if we needed time as a board to begin to discuss what direction, preliminary discussions. And I like your point particularly, to bring it to the next Monday night's meeting to let people know. I'm not saying that, but that's how you get more efficient. There's all these things we have to do that go against the old grains of effective and efficient government. And I, for one, think maybe we'll cycle back to a little bit of balance there, but I may not live long enough for that. But that's my intention. I want to be, I'm not trying to take anything away from the public eye. I'm not trying to take anything away from the Monday night regularly scheduled programming. But I'd like to keep our minds a little bit open on how these, this approach might be useful. And I like your idea a lot about having it booked in and just recommunicate well. So, a couple of us don't show up well.
And certainly executive sessions, because the public's not involved with those. They can bury what is done in the afternoon from my perspective. Fresh minds and whatever else that we need to do. And if it's a short item, but we know there's going to be a lot of deliberation, and I see no reason to delay putting that into a separate meeting.
Yeah, I don't, I really have struggled with the executive sessions after a long, regular meeting. They're very important, so.
One of the things that we've done that Masco has helped sometimes is we schedule a start a half hour earlier, and it starts with an executive session. And particularly if it's relatively straightforward and so on, that has been, soon as we finish at 7:20, we actually, what we do there is we start at 7 o'clock for regular meetings. But we get the executive session out of the way early and tends to be more efficient.
As an aside, is it possible to start the meetings at 7?
Well, that's item two on the agenda. So, let me, so, I like the way you think as you know. So, you know, I'm not going to over-formalize this, but let's, just so that we cover the topic. So, let's go. So, here we are, we're on item number two, which is our regularly scheduled, our regular schedule. We have a draft, some exact things. So, I will be in your June 6 through June 25th, the longest I've ever been away as an adult.
June 25?
June 6, June 25th is the day that I'll actually be back in the office. I'll be in town the day after tomorrow.
Oh, yeah, so it'll be away June 6 as well.
I'll be away for two or three weeks in February, which I want to point out now because I know it's a budget season, but.
It's the winter.
I'm going to Tasmania, and it's the height of summer there, so.
I'm a Tasmanian devil joke, so. But so, but that's a good point, all of us, anytime we're scheduling, we should make sure there are notes.
Yep.
So, the first question, the specific question, I don't mind either way, but is if you want me to be at the second June meeting, then we need to move it to the 25th. If you don't care, then we can, my feelings won't be here either way.
So, yeah, we just be the three here on the 6th.
These that's. Just looking to see, this is June 6. I'll take it as soon, June 6 is a Wednesday.
Oh, the first Monday, sorry.
The fourth is okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's the fourth.
The one that wouldn't be on the 18th, whether that should be on the 25th.
The original one that came out, original one that we got for the 18th. So, that's the only change that I saw between the original, the original draft and the draft last week, or this week.
That isn't, I used to have a draft that says this 18th, it's all.
Do we have a new schedule?
No, 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 no.
Or is it a copy of that?
You guys discussed it the last meeting that you wanted to perhaps put on the 25th. So, on that draft, that's the only thing I had changed.
This is the 25th.
So, it's still the 18th. You know, that was probably like, that's like.
This is the one that was in the packet from the meeting on Monday.
Right.
And this one has the 25th, not the 18th. So, we have a three-week gap here.
Versus a three-week gap, the other way was the 18th, because the next week stays, July stays the same.
To give more of a fairer benefit.
Okay, so we're on, so we're on the 25th as the second June.
So, the fourth and the 25th are confirmed.
Then in July, maybe.
Can I ask one, this is a tiny, small thing, but it really has helped at Masco. On the agenda, each meeting at the bottom, our admin puts down the next meeting or two, like put down the next two or three.
Yeah, the next couple of meetings.
Three, three weeks of meetings that are coming up so that we know. And also if there are potentially, for instance, department head meetings that we might want to be at or something, but anything that could be of use to us, this, this is okay, but this tends to get published once. What I like about this is it has updates and changes.
That's strictly going to be for the board, and now when 10:30 there's an update, I'll send it. But that's up to you.
If you do it that way, this, I just want to be sure we get it, as I say, using the agenda to provide the, here's what's coming up, because a choice, I need it to you because I love the way you're working it so far.
And I had something.
One thing to be careful of if we put down the next meeting is it needs to be the next regular meeting because if we stick a work session in, I wouldn't want somebody to see the agenda and assume that our next, there's not another meeting until then, and then stick a work session in, and somebody say, "Oh, I didn't know that. I looked at the agenda and it said your next meeting was." So, I think.
Just write, just write what they are.
And I think closely, I mean, I understand your concern, Dick. It's as long as the way that we know where to look and it's one spot because I sometimes go and just make sure that I haven't skipped in my calendar or something like that.
I have a note here that maybe I just, I have something about whether the second July meeting should be on the 16th, so what do we have as the second July?
I don't have that with me. I don't do that. Want me to go grab them? Want me to do that?
Sure.
Just to be clear, the June meetings, the fourth and the 25th, even though two of you will be here on the fourth?
No, we will be, but we'll be on the 6th.
I won't, but you.
I thought you were going on the 6th.
I know, I'm sorry. I got tied up into your creation schedule. I thought you were talking about the meetings. It's the fourth, I won't be here.
So, we have more people.
Yep.
So, we're the fourth and the 25th of June.
Fourth, okay.
So, we're not talking about the 16th of July or?
Yeah, we will, which is right to get copies.
While we're giving the copies, though, the way it runs out with this, the 25th that we just said, that's a three-week time between the fourth and the 25th. And then we have a two-week time because the next one, well, it's a two-week time to the ninth, and then a two-week time to the 23rd. So, if we make any changes there, it would be a three-week gap and then a one-week gap between them. That's all right, but.
Unless it changes to the 16th of July.
It removed it to the 16th.
Issue, I wasn't, somebody, does anybody have a recommendation on mentioning a problem on the 23rd?
23rd of July?
I don't know.
I think we just.
I won't be there. That was the only, that was my issue, having it on the 23rd. I didn't know that anything was switched on because of that.
No, I just, I just made a note that there was an issue for somebody, that's all.
Kelly, do you know on, just off the top, you had the date that Boyd gets back?
I think, I think he gets back on Tuesday, maybe Tuesday and Wednesday? Yeah, Tuesday is the 29th, so it's either the 29th or the 20th.
All right, so, so, I know you'll miss us, but you don't mind if we move it up, Kelly?
No, as long as you don't mind if we do a famous impression.
So, still.
Kelly takes really good notes, so I'm sure.
So, the second July meeting stays as it was.
It's the 16th.
Second July meeting will be the 16th?
The ninth.
The ninth.
First July is the ninth, the second is as was printed, the 23rd.
Okay. Fourth and 25th, so this is accurate for at least the next two months.
So, let's, so, okay, so the issue comes up with, and this is consistent with the whole idea of being, avoiding these late drag-on meetings where some of us are, you know, where we've had long days, or some of us have had long days. What do people think about starting at 7:00 instead of 7:30 hour meeting?
We did that for Masco, fabulous success.
I agree.
It was a huge thing.
One of the advantages of 7:30 in the January, February, and March timeframe is that we have a chance to get into FinCon meeting if it's, because they have them on the same nights to. There is some advantage to that if there's something going on, that we can provide some input, at least catch up with what's going on.
Could we make an ad hoc adjustment on those dates if we need?
Just a thought that I have.
That's a good point, Matt, you're right. That's a good point.
But if we made it standard one thing, and it might be a case of, by then they'll all be meeting in the same building, so we can go on from one road.
Those are, I'd frame that to figure this like, we should do it on the same day, but that's a.
Is there a way to change that?
But with this much notice, you know, I could reach out to Karen and let her know what our schedule is so that when they're building their schedule in September for the kind of year, they can keep that in mind when they're trying to balance their work and we can talk about it.
Several times maybe before, oh my goodness, this has come up, we need to talk about it. I'd love it if there were a few times when we sort of plan to get together proactively earlier. And we don't get quite, so we're a little more separate in how we operate than I wish we were. And even if we meet, and I don't say total of thumbs, but even if it isn't because we have a really important issue to deal with, I think the check-in, we're on track on this and so on, would be a very good thing to start to look better.
Sometimes it's just a matter of keeping up as an observer, as a selectman as an observer, and the FinCon one is something. And sometimes a question comes up that we can help them with. But it shouldn't, I don't see in any way trying to have a joint meeting, except once or twice a joint meeting. It's just the participation, being at the meeting, watching what's going on, and understanding, and then recognizing, okay, I have to think about that when we do a budget thing or whatever. It's just sometimes very helpful. So, if FinCon were interested in doing a different night, that would be excellent.
Just throw that out there.
Oh, okay.
If they tell us where to go, then, you know, or during budget season or something. You know, you might find that they hate Monday nights and they just haven't to respect tradition.
We were hoping you'd ask.
Is there a little schedule of when everybody meets? I'm sure there is. Maybe I can just get a copy of it, like the.
Supposed to be on the website, it's supposed to be on the website, and that will be a lot of consolations.
No, they don't meet until, they start meeting in September, then they set up a calendar with dates that they definitely know, and usually we'll feed into that. And I will try to make a new calendar that's a budget calendar, and making sure that we have intersex built in. And this year, we'll probably talk about the importance, you know, or the relative idea of some of the budget forms or, you know, moderator's form and how we can better align our efforts. But being in the same building and having both of the rooms on the same floor with television cable capabilities, I think will make it much more logistically comfortable, but also easier to deal with the logistics of aligning our efforts.
The combination of starting a half hour earlier and doing more management of the length of the agenda, I just think it really has potential.
Great.
So, you have when you want to start it, you're going to start with July 1? So, you're going to start on the 4th?
Yes. Please make sure it's, there's a big flag thing on the website or in the front page, and if you'd be kind enough to, not once, but several times.
Yeah.
Yep.
With the meeting back.
Well, I'm going to, I'll update this and send it out again and.
I don't know about other people, but like, if you were kind enough to just do a little reminder.
I'll also have to let Brad Sweet Company know because they have to get in early and so on.
Oh, yeah.
And they might like it, too.
Who's Brad Sweet?
The cable guy.
Cable guy?
Cable guy.
Cable guy.
So, the other, the other related item is just so, I'm working with our office here in trying to get a preliminary agenda to me earlier, as in like Monday, like a week early.
Excellent.
And I know you have, I'm not speaking to you, but I believe you share concerns about us getting materials as far in advance as possible. And I'm not saying it's a hard stop at the door. Somebody comes in and it's time, it's time sensitive and it's important, and it needs to get added on the agenda, you know, obviously that's, well, in Kelly's discretion. But I think it's okay to just let people know there's an interim step, which is a minimum of the agenda, a minimum of the amount of stuff that people are going to do.
Could we just talk about that, for example? If something comes in, a package, a request of some sort, not necessarily to talk with it, an application for alcohol license, for example, it has to go through a couple of steps. In that case, it goes to an ADAT committee, and then it comes to the board selectmen's office. And then I think in some cases, Kelly wants to go through it and buys in his one more. Is everything correct? Does it seem to be a problem with it? Because the more you can collect that, clean that up before we get it, then there's not that many extra people who have to clean it up. So, we appreciate what typically we refer to as completed staff work before it goes out. But as soon as that's done, if that's done on a Tuesday, I would think that we can, you can just take that package and mail it and say, "This is something that will be on the agenda for the meeting of UPTO." And then I have a place where I have the date of the meeting, and I stuff things in for that meeting.
Yeah, I'm going to have to, I don't want to take a piece, Bill.
Yeah, I think that's getting confused, too. I've got so much coming in.
Oh, you're saying on Tuesday, you get all of the things, okay.
All of it.
Okay.
No, I didn't say that, no, no.
Well, whatever the date is, that it comes in is a whole point.
I'm talking about my, my role and responsibilities as chair in trying to help the district of the town. So, staff, you want me to call you staff?
Have a call list.
Staff will try to get me a preliminary agenda. The goal is the interim Monday. I don't want stuff with it, just the agenda. So, that should allow us to finalize the agenda and distribute everything to the rest sooner. I don't know if we're going to pick up, if we pick up two days.
Yeah, it's great. Good, let's walk on that, good.
One thing I would request, if materials change at all, is there a way to highlight what has changed? Because otherwise, we go through the whole packet again, not knowing what's different. And some of these packages, you know, one came through and it was like 40 pages, and you're not sure which pieces is.
Sometimes there are.
Change, yeah. By what item number it is on the top or something like that.
Or just highlighting the item or something so we know where to go to work for the change.
Sometimes it might just be easier just to scan the whole thing back in. If we're going to end up going that route.
If we go to online, then it's much easier to manage.
It's just easy to scan the whole thing and just say, delete the last one, and here's the new one.
But even with the new one, then, what's different? Because we might have read through.
It won't be, that's true. It won't be, that's true. I, I mean, I could tell you in the email, just say, item number six has changed.
If you've read it through, and then the new one.
Yeah.
If you've read it through forty pages, and a new one comes in, and one page is different, believe me, I don't read all forty pages again. I look to see if there's something that kind of hits my eye.
And not to get way steps ahead of where we are now, but if, if someday we go to a board pa, a software package, which they have up there, and man, it's all this kind of stuff. So it's like right now, like we're doing, like we did in emergency acquisitions, when they do due diligence, they now, it used to be some big law firm, huge conference room table looking over the water in Boston, and with ten, twenty something year old associates sitting there. Now it's all virtual. There's a virtual room, and it's parked right on. Added to the, so and so added this to the virtual room, and such and such a day, so it'd be, I think so, so. But, but yeah, great point, we need to know what's been updated and how we're gonna figure it out.
I think there's two levels to it. One is that this has been added, or this has been changed. And the other, depending upon what it is, if it's a letter, one page letter, but if it's a document of some sort, where there's been changes made after you've read through it, rather than just get the new document, get the document with a markup, so that we see what the differences are, and your eyes can very quickly see, oh yeah, I got that, I got that, and then you, you don't have to, you're only, you're only looking at three pages that have a change in it. It's different from, again, a whole new document or the document changed in general, okay? You have to go through the whole.
I think you are thinking, I encourage you, I think, I think it's something like, well, do the different versions of them, and we're understanding or something like that.
Sure, yes, yes.
And I think your call goes more to just, there's a new letter from the tri-town council or something.
Or a piece embedded somewhere in this large stack of materials. It's like, I have no idea what changed, and I could read it again and miss it.
So then we can do the flag now, or we're just, alright.
Alright.
Work sessions. So, I think, I like.
Half of your suggestion?
That's not bad.
Which half did you like?
I liked the half of putting it in. I, I don't think we need to do two a month, is what I thought you said. But, but, but I would.
We've been working at that pace, it seems this past year, I gotta admit, so.
But not necessarily in the summer.
No, not in the summer.
Remember I came from a FinCon background, I didn't sell off. Okay, so, can, so first of all, the, we can, we can change from other days than I imagine about this, but does three o'clock on Thursdays work as a default?
I like that because it is essentially in between the Mondays, and whether it comes before, you know, three days before or three days after the board selectman meeting, I kind of like that, because sometimes we do follow-up work, and sometimes we give a little space. So I would definitely speak in favor of that.
So what about, I mean, it isn't as simple as the first, let's say, well, what if, what if it's the, like it says, the Thursday after the first meeting, did that make sense?
So there's something in the week.
Yeah.
That's a great way to do it.
Did we say Thursday?
So it'll be like.
So it'll be the fourteenth of June?
Thursday, yeah.
We said Thursday, right?
Wednesday's is generally tougher.
Yeah, so it'll be. Travel about Thursday, okay, yeah, that would be the, the fourteen?
Yeah.
Because it'll be the after the first session, so.
Well, the first session's the fourth, so would Thursday, the seventh be the Thursday?
It's in between.
Oh, in between.
Well, that's quick, no, no, oh yeah, no, not the seventh, yeah, the next one.
Okay, right.
So that would be the work session.
So when you update this document, right, you put those.
That makes sense.
Yeah, we can, we can whatever, we can change it, we can add a second one, and the time you, whatever, we want.
Essentially, what we're gonna do is put in ten more dates to this thing.
Yeah. The idea, that even if we have a little bit of a vision, different of vision of what we should do, and we, we have a general, that the point is, in my, my two cents, that the number of agenda items is gonna be moving.
But we don't have to, but, but based on what we have for January, for example, I would not add another one in, we have lots of them in January already. So that's one case where we really don't have to add any, any work sessions.
Well, why don't, I'd rather just be consistent, like she's John's idea, that we're gonna put them in, and if we don't need them, we're gonna communicate.
But I mean, we have so many work sessions already.
Oh, we have work sessions.
That's what I meant, we already have a bunch of them in that. I said we're gonna add ten, now we're doing.
We have, we have Wednesdays, so maybe we can change them to Thursdays or Thursday?
I like the earlier times personally, clean, clears the decks to do some other stuff.
So, yeah, there's no, so can you do that?
Yeah, so you all the work sessions, that's right.
Yeah, Thursdays, when it, when it comes to the, you just got to the middle of the winter. The, when it comes to, you know, Christmas, Thanksgiving, we can decide to take it with it or whatever.
Sure.
Predictability, I think, is good.
Is the fourteenth definitely one there in June when you're away?
That's.
July thirteenth, right?
Why don't we start, why don't we start the first work session in July?
July.
We can Skype from Athens and hold it for October. Okay.
One P M. start.
Yeah, great. Okay. Our next topic, and I, I've had informally some enthusiastic response to this. So I have the, the joy of being on other boards, and serving other boards, both in the private sector and in the public sector, and seeing some stuff from some very sophisticated public sector boards, particularly under North Shore. And, and a lot of them are just using electronic docs and iPads, whether we go, a number of them have one, have some type of board software that helps organize. But even if we, and we can sort of talk about that, look into that. But even if it's like email, it's just, I presume everybody has seen it, but, you know, and it doesn't have to be, like, you get a laptop, right?
Yeah.
And you've got a laptop, you can do that, or, I mean, there's another tier, which is if we were to decide to go to this, whether it's a tonic, legitimate tonic expense, or we do it ourselves, or whatever. I have one, and I'm happy to pay for it and upgrade it if an upgrade is needed. I have the wild sense that Green Topsville would like us saving a lot of paper.
Can I make a suggestion if we do that, that we do make a decision, and this takes just a little bit of technical checking. iPads run on iOS, laptops run on either Android, not Android, but either on Microsoft, or it's going to be on Apple O S X. iOS and O S X generally play pretty well together, don't always stand. So we, there are issues of compatibility potentially. So I'd be interested in being able to standardize to a certain extent, if we can do that. And speaking for myself, if they were town-owned and loaned out to us, I'm not looking forward to spending money on things, but that would be a way to enforce the standardization. And the other thing too, is Apple puts out, or offers refurbished products that are, and you save a couple hundred bucks, so.
So you, I saw a bunch in there, there was definitely, like I said, you got, depends on how much, what you want it to have, what kind of.
If it's cloud-based, you don't need a ton of bulk storage. So we go with low gigs, I'd say high res, low gigs, and we don't need.
Screen size, like I didn't know if you wanted.
Ten and a half is plenty.
Different people like, some people like a bigger screen.
Like I said, I just, I didn't know where.
I appreciate this very much, Debbie, but when I think of it, probably on the, you know, five hundred dollars a piece, if it truly added, you know, and it took five to do it, and sell one, two thousand is a whole lot, but I also want to be very careful that we're making the right decisions to go forward. But I think standardizing has advantages in display.
I, I love standardizing, and, and again, we're gonna blow off the cost in a way, we'll look at it carefully, we'll think about it carefully, maybe we'll do private fundraising if it's really objectionable. But putting that aside for a moment, it, it really will save a lot of time, won't it? I mean, and paper isn't as expensive, but it's gonna save a lot of.
We'll save the cost of one iPad and paper.
Yeah, really.
Fifteen hundred dollars is what, one of the vendors I talked with, he said, just based on the paper we're talking about, we'd probably save fifteen hundred dollars just on paper for a year.
We have justifications.
It's a crazy way to come up with it, but he said just to give you some reference.
No, we have justifications, and if we don't need these things, which I really appreciate, because I love having everything at hand every week, but wouldn't it be great if it was electronic? Plus.
Does anybody have any objections? So I was asking Debbie if, to look into it further.
Yeah, absolutely.
Absolutely look into it further, but we do need to have some tools that would go along with it. And here'd be the example that I would have. If you have something on paper and you're reading it, and you see an issue that you're concerned about, circle it, put a arrow, highlight it, whatever.
Electronic?
Electronic.
Today, I'm saying, on paper, I'm trying to think about the work methods that I would use with what we have now. And the idea of going electronic, that's fully with me. The point being though, that we need some tools when we do that.
Yeah, but that was helpful, so you said.
A tool, we need, we need tools.
Software?
Well, I'm not saying what they are, but the tools that allow us to do our functions.
Is that in the basic operating system, or we're talking?
The capabilities are all there. What it produces as a product is perhaps, you know, a, either a free or a fifty dollar app, or it may be built into Apple's, but the question is, would you be distributing things in PDF? Would you be doing it in the native Pages, which is what Apple uses? Would you be using Microsoft Docs? Because that's the industry standard, those are the kinds of questions to answer. But one of the keys would be, because it's a touchscreen, I don't like the idea of stylus, basically an electronic touchscreen markup, so that if Dick or I are doing things, when we call it up, we now have yellow underlined, we can do any color we want, and as often as we want. But now we keep track ourselves that way. And if we file it in our own name, there would be ways others could access that to look at it.
And you can bookmark it, so you can go find it when you're trying to find it.
They're standard.
All kinds of tools.
Standard.
The point is, the concept of electronic is absolute, but we do need some tools to go along with that. And, and we are not creating these tools for the first time. People, they're, they're available. But then it also, as you point out, relates to how we deal with documents and such as that, what kind of documents that we deal with. We were talking about the, the quality of the document, the bitrate, so to speak. Some things do not require much quality, other things where it's very dense data, you need it, where there are pictures, you sometimes need it. So that will vary also when we try to do things electronically.
Retina display, you're covered.
But I think you were also saying you don't want to put too much density into it, whatever. Today's day and age, it doesn't really make a difference, but if it did.
If it's on the cloud, not an issue.
Okay, good, good.
Because we're not.
High density is always better. If, if, if it doesn't cost you anything in time or storage.
No, of course.
So, so can you use the presumption that we're gonna go in a direction of standardization? Obviously, anyone doesn't want to do it, so we're not gonna call it a dischifflary, but.
Even, even if it's a matter of going to some, if you, if you find out that Ipswich is using something like this, and you think it's, it's a good direction, I would go to one or two of their meetings, and I would talk with their selectman sometime offline about what their experiences are. And also, though, Wenham has one, but it's a little different, but they like it too. I'm willing to go and, and get the touch and feel of what others have been able to use successfully.
What I can do, yeah, with the software that Leahy helps board use, not selectmen, but it's a public sector service.
I think this is a great direction to be looking.
Excellent, thank you all for being open and supportive. Number five is something I actually had talked a couple of years ago, this has never materialized. And so, there obviously is this layer, if I like a better word, of our job, that has to do with being at certain community functions. And many of them are annual functions, like there's a COA Christmas dinner, there's a memorial, they pray, aside from, you are representing the board, you're giving them whatever kind of words. And, and so what I, I don't know, you might have better sources than, but I found particular when I started, that I heard two weeks after something happened, that it had happened. And there wasn't a law. Like, not that there's, any selectman that wants to go to anything, is free to go to anything, but it wouldn't be real bad if we just kind of communicated with each other to make sure that at least.
One is there.
Yeah, like, right now, since you've been on, basically, you've got everything, wonderful. We can keep that up if you want.
Yeah, we can have it.
So, so what I, so that's in your packet. The first thing is, and thank you, Debbie, for getting us rolling in correction, is that I'm talking about something that looks like a calendar, just a visual person in some way. So not, not like this thing, but, yeah, see that? This is just preliminary draft one point oh, one zero zero. And, and one of the things that had a little trouble getting it off the ground with your predecessor, she was trying, was that all of a sudden some popped up that had like every CO, I'm picking on the COA, but every COA field trip, like, that's not what I'm trying to get to. I'm trying to get to definitely the, the annual events, the Memorial Day, the Veterans Day, the Christmas dinners, those kind of things. And then when we hit something like the fighter retirement, those kind of things, particularly when people request the presents, that we can use that. So that's what we're developing.
Yeah, I think that would be very good. I've missed some things, not being aware of time to give.
But even this one, when it comes digital, all the tabs are on the bottom for, for each month. And at the bottom, you can always write notes, like if somebody's gonna attend to something or.
I was gonna say, that would be nice to add, to make sure that we do have a representative, and that they know which ones they're assigned to.
You can always add, like I said, there's notes on the bottom, if there's none, it's from like, you know, Lynn's attending on May sixteenth or whatever.
But it also gives us, that's, that's, it also gives us the ability to talk about it and, and just run through it.
Right, and just remember who signed up for what.
Yep.
So where, where is this calendar?
Nowhere yet.
I haven't, I haven't posted, it's not like it's gonna be posted, although.
We still have to.
Won't you post it?
Well, eventually, we'll just work it, it's not.
It would be eventually, so it's just a thought on that.
Yeah.
Okay, because on our website, we have the municipal calendar and a community calendar.
Right, so this is intended for, I don't think that, it's intended for the use of the board selectmen to coordinate our activities, it's a public document.
Make sure we never miss anything.
Yeah, or, or less often. It's not, the other ones can continue. Alright, so, let me just put a couple of stars on things, I'm gonna flow up.
So some of the, these things, forgive me, because I'm, I don't have the background on it, but like the Borg Family Foundation road race, is that down here because?
You approved it.
But one of us should attend?
No.
See, I wouldn't, I would, that's why, that's why this isn't going anywhere, we're working, and it doesn't have to be just my vision, but my vision of it, that would be.
And the only reason I did is because you approved it, and it was brought up at the last meeting, and, and tracking all these type of things.
Yeah, I don't want to make this a full-time job. It's not.
No, no, it's just something that, like I said, it was just brought up, so that's why.
But that's, in my idea, that's, that's the kind of thing that won't be on there.
Right, 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 okay.
On this calendar, you can do it on the website.
But also, it'll take one very short conversation at each board meeting we have. Look ahead two weeks, so say, things covered, two of us gonna be there, three of us gonna be, whatever the case may be, just so we check in.
But we can kind of look a year in advance at this, right? Aren't there some basic, you know, things that every year we know are coming, so people are taking vacations or going away or whatever, like.
The Memorial Day Parade would be.
Right, Strip Festival, I don't know, something, or Veterans Day, or.
Yeah, exactly.
No, you know, even like this, like Dick Collin came up to me, touch base on, as the chair, touch base with Memorial Day, and Dick's kind enough to, to do whatever he can do.
Boyd kind of assigned it to me. Boyd kind of assigned it to me, I mean.
You want to be sure.
But he was always here. That's why Nick was always here.
And I always try to at least attend it, like I'm at a family wedding. So sometimes there can be the need for communication.
Let's talk about the website and the community calendar, because that's something else.
Can we go there, just one second, just to close?
Yeah, and the website's coming up on nine seven, so you, I'm not over-formalizing the structure.
So, so the parade at nine, is it, what's listed on this calendar, is that when we have to be there? No, I know you're taking care of this one, but is that when the parade starts? Well, I'm just, what time?
It starts at nine.
That's not advertised, it starts at nine.
It starts at nine, so, just for our planning purposes, whatever.
Eight thirty.
Eight thirty is when we'd be there, okay.
And we're beginning to.
Yeah, we may never get that exact, but at least we'll have a heads up that those are some of those that we're.
Yeah, because I wouldn't exactly know who to contact to find out. So if it's on here, that'd be super.
Okay. Alright. Lynn, this is, you wanted to, I think you wanted to talk about number six a little bit on the night, we didn't get to it.
Oh, yes. I think this kind of ties in with further down the road, when we're talking about goals and objectives, that I think some of the feedback that I've gotten is that people love being updated on what's going on in town, and especially when we and especially when we have our priorities, our goals and objectives identified, keeping everybody up to date on how we're doing, so that they see progress and that they feel like things are moving. And it's very hard for people to get to so many different meetings, you know, five or six different meetings going on. So if there was some vehicle for us to provide updates to people, and if it's not the board of, the board meeting, then maybe through another vehicle to be able to provide those updates. And then to let people know how to contact us. I know, Dick, you were meeting with people at the library, but we can be reached via email individually and as a group. I'm getting some people calling me on my cellphone, I have no idea how they're getting my cellphone, but.
They're used to it.
But just to provide people with ways in which they can get in touch with us individually and then like an ongoing way of keeping people up to date on important.
And I think less of it, from what we talked a little bit about, then not a formal meeting where there can be an exchange back and forth, why is this happening, so and so forth. I thought your idea of potentially having a, up to a half hour before a regular meeting, that would be essentially, here's what's happening and kind of open questions, some of the function of the listening session. But something that would represent a broader spectrum of selectmen. There's a perception in town, which I don't think is entirely warranted, in fact, I don't think it's warranted, but that the meetings at the town hall are kind of TWT sponsored. And I think it's because TWT's done the best and one could argue only job of really publicizing a great deal. I've been there for those and so on and so forth. I would like to see something that people perceive as everybody and where it's open. Because I suspect, to be quite honest, there are some folks who aren't sure they want to go to that meeting, because they're afraid they're going to, you know, be walking to horn his nest. It's never been that way, I've enjoyed it every time I've gone there. But there's a perception, I like to get away from that, whether or not those continue, I think we need to do something different.
Are your meetings, Dick, board sponsored? Or you have your sessions at the library, is that something that's scheduled by the board? Is that part of what we do or is that just you trying to reach out to folks?
I started it trying to reach out to folks who was open to the board. At the time, there was four of us active and John said that he was interested also. And so I did some of the sessions and John did some of the sessions, okay? One-on-one, I mean, not one on many, it's just one selectman at a time now.
So we wouldn't have.
So that's the way it's been. And I think it's great.
What kind of turnout do you get?
Oh, half a dozen.
Yeah, half a dozen very interested people.
And I'll tell you, the focus has been on finance. So the way I see it, a lot of it has been on finance. Yeah, most of it has been on finance. And that is not the objective, to say it's on finance. It is about issues that somebody wants to bring up with a selectman about things. So my suggestion is that we continue it as one vehicle. There isn't any one vehicle that is the only one people can use. They have your cellphone, your wifi, your email, meet you on the street, see you before a selectman's meeting, the listening session, whatever. We should have, in my mind, multiple, some of which work better for some people, some selectmen they were, I think works better than a lot. Emails are better than phone calls or vice versa. And for some of the citizens, some things work better. They'd rather like a phone call, they'd rather wait and catch you, where they can talk to you eye to eye. Somebody else says, oh, there's an open thing, I can reach the call, maybe I'll just go listen, maybe I'll ask a question. I think, and all this is, is it's a follow-up, it's not a follow-up. It's a, similar to what we're getting from state reps, Senator Lovely does this, what other towns are doing, and I had done that survey before I started this one. And in fact, Wenham was doing it, Milton was doing it, Botched has started doing it.
Doing what?
These kind of listening sessions, open office, office hours, citizen, citizen input, they're called different things by different people.
My only concern, you know, if we decide to stay with Thursdays for an hour and a half in the library or whatever the timing is, is that once a month or what do you do?
Once a month, here's where we are with it. As far as I'm concerned, we're gonna put something down and we're gonna watch it and listen, listening sessions. Thursdays are terrible, you gotta do them on a Saturday. Or you can't do it five thirty, you gotta start at eight o'clock at night, whatever it is. Once a month, we gotta see you more often than that. Hmm, twice a month, I don't know. What I know is, if you do something for a while and then you've listened and people say, that's good, or it's not good, or it's good, but if you change it this way, it'd be better, that's what we're after.
Okay, my only concern is that I would like to make myself available, I think everybody would. So I think if we come to some agreement as to what works for everybody and not have too many things going on, that some are board sponsored, some are not, they're just an individual person, just make it very clear to people where the selectmen will be if we wanted to rotate so that they get a chance to listen to everybody. I know Thursdays don't work for me at all. You know, I'm working, I've got my daughter and also I can never be there on that timeframe. So just to discuss something that works for everybody, so that perhaps we could rotate and have some kind of a formalized, you know, we just go through and talk about what the priorities are and where we stand with them, and then have maybe an open-ended session. So there's kind of a consistent format that people know if they come, what they're going to get, when they can talk, you know, about anything and everything and when to get updates. And just something that we can all participate in, so it doesn't fall on our own person.
Lynn, I would say two things, number one, one of the challenges Dick and I have, we've shown up together a couple of times. And there's been a concern that if two of us are there, even though we're not conducting town business.
Right, you don't wanna do that.
We're not doing that.
We're not doing that.
So we just rotate among the stuff.
So, and so what I'm saying, as it's happened because of schedules and so and so forth, Dick's done the majority, I've done a few here and there. Two points, one, I think if we had kind of a posted open session where it would be okay and then we just make sure that at least one of us is gonna be there, say it starts at six, or starts at six thirty or six fifteen or something. Then if we do show up, fine, we're covered, it's posted and so on. The second thing is, my experience in going to those is, it's always been a case of those who come, and I know John Craig and David have been there and others. People come with questions and so it's a listening. And while there is a listening, there's also a trying to explain things and so on, so it's a back and forth. It's a very different quality experience than, I've had conversations with people I'm not already friends with, you know, from my other social friends in town. And in that regard, I've been surprised at how valuable it's been. We've actually, a couple cases, I've developed kind of an understanding and a working relationship with folks because I've been able to better understand what the concerns are and how they are and what they want to do. My experience on those listening sessions is you get committed people there.